The Commissioners' Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on September the 27th, 2022, 10:00 AM, in Commissioner's courtroom, County Administration Building, 200 South Tex Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the invocation pledge of allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag, and I'll lead those. Father, I want to thank you for your love, and I want to thank you for your mercy. I want to thank you, Father, for all the blessings that we have living in the country we have. Father, I ask that you be with our first responders and all those who protect us from harm. Be with our military, Father, as they're protecting us from outside forces. Father, I ask that you be with us this morning as we make decisions for the county. Give us wisdom. I ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns, and I think I've got a couple more to speak there. Ronnie Batouli?
Ronnie?
Ronnie?
Yeah. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Appreciate that you allowed me to speak today. What I want to talk about today is about money and the people's money that Brazos County. This has become very concerning to me. It seems like the wishes of the majority of the people is not being heard. The people of Brazos County will have the opportunity to voice their opinion with the best method possible come Election Day on November 8th of 2022. They will get to vote for or against a $10 addition to each license plate they register to fund or defund another bureaucracy that has far-reaching powers such as eminent domain and future toll roads. They will also have the opportunity to vote for or against a $100 million county bond. Per Exhibit B, which I hope the voters read, it states that the estimated principal and interest required to pay on time will be $204 million, a whopping $104 million in interest. This is what our children and grandchildren in Brazos County will be burdened with. And let's not forget that we have $81 million on the books in debt right now. So if my math serves me correctly, the county will be $181 million in debt, which does not include any interest payments. Time does not allow me to speak on the RMA proposal, but I will be back to address this. It's obvious around here what is going on with the proposed tax rate, so I won't waste my time or yours speaking on that. I would like to focus my time on one additional subject matter, and that is how the American Rescue Plan Act money totaling $42.5 million, and what you are planning to spend it on, and equally important, what you are not planning on spending it on. Fifty-nine percent, $25 million, is what you have earmarked to build a medical examiner's office. Twenty-two percent, or $9.36 million, to renovate the old Bryan ISD building, which y'all paid $9.38 million in 2021, I believe. And there's been no acknowledgement of the plan or need for the use of that building yet that I'm aware of. The current market value for the property is only $2.6 million today. So 81% of the money is going to two projects that are certainly not in immediate need for Brazos County. We currently, via Travis County Medical Examiner, we have conducted 200 autopsies in 2021. The county's budget, $450,000 for autopsies, and I know it costs more to do the traveling and stuff, but I do not believe it warrants the cost of $25 million plus the projected salaries. I'm not opposed to a medical examiner's office in Brazos County, but I am opposed to it at the expense of much more critical safety and health needs that are being stricken from the list that you have created, such as to assist in generator purchases for Wixon Creek Utility District that services thousands of Brazos County residents as their only water source. In February, the deep freeze, water was shut off to thousands of people because of electricity outages. Broadband to the rural parts of the county was cut from the funding. Broadband is now considered an essential service. The people, mainly east of the bypass, have to depend on direct-site broadband to get their internet service. Numerous road enhancements, especially Old Relance Road, which is probably the one of the most major county roads throughout through the northeastern part of Brazos County, was struck. There are other bridge repairs, termed as repairs, that were removed, and to me, that sounds a little bit scary. In all there were over 30 items that were struck that would improve the safety and lives of our citizens today in lieu of a medical examiner's office in a building we don't have a current need for today. I'm starting to see a trend here, and I pray that I suspect it is not true, but the $100 million bond issue, many for roads, not one project is listed east of the bypass. Of all the projects that were cut, the vast majority of them will negatively affect people east of the bypass. Commissioners and Judge, I ask for you to do the will of the people, not the will of the few. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Would you identify yourself? I mean, we know who you are, but we need it for the record.
Ronnie Batouli, Curtin, Texas.
Roy Flores.
Roy Flores, 507 East 31st. I was going to talk about this, but I think the gentleman hit all the bases on there. What I do want to say is that last week I was here, and I was very, very disappointed in how this commission treated young taxpayers. Now, y'all aren't going by the Roberts Rules of Order, which, when you have a public hearing, that is where the public gets to interact with their elected officials. Now, we had some young people come up here, very intelligent, very to-the-point complaints that they had. They weren't rowdy. They were very professional. I didn't see the same professionalism on this committee. There were several of you that didn't act in a professional manner, in my opinion, and that really, that really got me embarrassed for Brazos County. Now, when, when you have people come up here and talk, and then you come and have a employee come give some other facts, well, you've opened that up for more discussion, and you didn't allow folks to come up here. I was going to make a point of order, but since you don't go by Roberts Rule of Order, I guess it wouldn't make any difference, because some of those facts, these people should have had the opportunity to talk on, but you didn't allow that. So I certainly hope this doesn't happen again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you.
Roger Stout.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, both present and listening remotely. My name is Roger Stout, and I come before you this morning as a concerned citizen of Brazos County. It does not appear this court is acting in the best interest of its taxpayers and citizens. This court approved a budget and then presented a property tax rate that would generate tax revenue $7 million greater than the approved budget. You directed the extra $7 million to be added to unallocated capital, bringing the total capital expenditures in the budget to approximately $9 million. There is another $11 million in capital expenditures on the agenda for today that you plan on paying out of American Rescue Plan Act. That is a total of approximately $20 million you plan on spending next year for capital items, the largest of which are administrative facilities here in downtown Bryan, where there is office space controlled by the county available for expansion, while rejecting projects like expanding broadband within the county, which is a public safety issue, as well as paving and maintaining the roadways of the county. This is hard to understand. The county has $88 million in unallocated and unrestricted funds, which equals a significant portion of the annual property collections. Those funds have been added to for at least the last 10 years with shortfalls and budget spending. This sounds a lot like a slush fund to me. All the time, this court has been increasing the tax rate. The taxes of the county have been significantly impacted by the increase in property values. Plus, there is new property being added to the rolls annually, which has increased the tax the county collects. Based upon prior history, the no-revenue rate should provide adequate funding for next year's budget. The proposed budget has several items in it that should be explained. The court needs to go back to the original budget and adopt a rate that all the commissioners can live with. The needs of the county should become the priority of this court and not the spending county funds on projects that are not in the best interest of the county and the taxpayers do not want to pay for.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick Giamara.
Patrick Giamara. I live at 213 Fairway Drive, Bryan, Texas. I want to thank you guys for what y'all do, and I really appreciate for everything y'all do, and mainly taking all the flak that y'all get for trying to do the right thing. And these other gentlemen that are speaking were 100% right, you know. We, y'all's job is to take care of the citizens and the citizens' needs first, and then you, if there's anything left over, to give the citizens what they want. Unfortunately, right now, they want some of their tax money back, so I just wanted to thank you for one thing that you did do. You took some of the fund, this rescue fund, and you gave it to BISD, Bryan Independent School District. I want to thank y'all for that. I know y'all are not getting a lot of thanks, but I'm thanking y'all, simply because the city of Bryan will not take care of their own school district. They have denied a location for a new maintenance facility, transportation maintenance facility, and this is not right, because they're putting money and profit over our children and our safety of our children. And the Bryan Independent School District, economic development depends on our school district. That's, that's just the way it is, just like it depends on, on our roads and our, and our police and everything else. If you don't improve and invest in our school district, which is investing in our children, and our children are the future of Bryan, and I want to thank y'all for what y'all give to the Bryan Independent School District, even though they say that their, their growth is just, is just going, they're building new schools, they're doing everything they can to keep up with the growth. And like I said, our economic development depends on the, the school districts, and I want to thank y'all for that, and I want to thank y'all for what you're doing. And I know that y'all are going to do the right thing, and that's to give the citizens of the county what they need first. Thank y'all.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's the last that I had on number two.
I signed with a finger, but I'm speaking on public forum. Well, yes, I am, but since last week, they, I just would like to speak during public forum. Good morning. My name is Ishika Shaw, for those of you who are not familiar with me. For the past two weeks, I've been missing my 8:00 AM kinesiology class so that I could come here looking professional so that the court would hear me. I now have no interest in proving my credibility to you when it's clear the court has no consideration or respect for the time us students have been putting into coming into these meetings. At the first mention that students were concerned about being disenfranchised, you should have done everything in your power to look into it, because our right to vote is serious. The election code is a Google search away, and we were able to find where it says that changing the polling location is still perfectly legal. We even connected you with a Texas civil rights lawyer to tell you it is still legal and possible to bring the MSC back. We have proved to you there's community support behind getting the MSC, MSC back. You knew how important this was to us, because we have been missing class week after week to keep showing up, but you couldn't even be bothered to acknowledge the information we've been telling you by doing your own research. Commissioner Nancy Berry, considering you were the former mayor of College Station and your husband is a professor at Mays, I have no idea how you could be so shortsighted into our needs of students, but you admitted last week-
Let me stop you there. We're not going to have any personal attacks. If you want to, you can state your opinions about that, but we're-
Okay, I'm sorry if that came off as a personal attack, but since you admitted last week that you made a mistake, and we are now telling you it is not too late to change it, there is nowhere in the MOVE Act that requires polling locations to be finalized before sending out the ballots. The Act simply specifies the ballot must be sent out 45 days in advance so that the overseas voters are able to mail in their ballot before Election Day. You only need to notify people of changes to polling locations five days before early voting, and considering a majority of the College Station population didn't know that the MSC was removed as an early voting poll, I hardly think the overseas voters will care about the MSC being reinstated as a poll. There are truly no excuses left that you can make to justify not reinstating the MSC as a poll, and throwing more legislative nonsense in our face just isn't going to work anymore, because it's clear that there's a lot of misinformation going around. There is not a single College Station resident that has advocated for City Hall to remain as an early voting poll. We also now know that you are able to have more than one polling location, so you have multiple outlets to correct the mistake you stated you made last week. Your inaction today will only make it clear to all of us that you either are trying to suppress the student vote, or that you just can't be bothered to deal with the administrative inconveniences correcting your mistake will bring. Either way, there are a lot of eyes on you today, so I recommend you finally do something after asking the students to miss our classes for four weeks simply because you couldn't be bothered to look into how, the laws. I typically am very respectful to authority figures, but I'm tired of hearing your empty words and excuses. So while I would thank you for your time, at this point, I think it's only fair that you thank us for our time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's the last, I guess you got the name and all with that one. Okay. All right, so that's the last one on number two. We will go to presentation and discussions. Presentation of 2022 Collections Program for the Year Award, the Government and Collection Association with Texas Brazos County Collections Department, Tanya Skinner and staff. There you are.
Tanya, it's my understanding that the College Collection Department collected above and beyond for all the cities and counties out there?
The COVID, during COVID and everything.
During COVID, yeah.
We changed our protocols, lowering the payment plans, working with people once they got better jobs or got a second job or whatever it took, we can resumme up on a payment plan, and this, this set of staff has done sensational on it.
Okay, 2022 Collections Program of the Year, presented to Brazos County Collections Department. So this is State of War?
Yes, sir.
We are-
Yes, sir.
We are-
I was really happy-
Very proud of your department. You do a great job.
Congratulations on a job well done.
We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Come on down. Come on down.
We'll give it to you after that.
Yeah, come down just a little. Yeah, you're good.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Cheers, Judge.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on and consider and take action on Agenda Ibis IV through 30, and we're going to go a little out of order this morning. I'm going to move number 12 up. I think we've got some young folks with 4H that may need to get back to school. So the number 12 is proclamation, 2022, 2022-017, designating October the 2nd through the 8th, 2022, as National 4H Week in Brazos County, Texas. Let's see.
Do we need to sign?
We need to sign.
Judge, do you want to vote?
How about I offer a motion that we approve?
I second the motion that we approve.
Okay, motion made in secret to approve the proclamation. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I want to congratulate the 4H program and these young leaders in their accomplishments. They do a great job. Thank you.
And it's been an honor for me to see so many of these young people grow up into 4H, and they're quite outstanding young men and women. I'm excited about the opportunities you will have, and you will share with your community wherever you go. Thank you all.
So while they're signing, let me read the proclamation. Whereas Brazos County Commissioners' Court is proud to honor the 4H Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service for 115 years of providing experience- for 115 years of providing experience-based education for youngsters throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas this admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing to members of our society. And whereas its more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in age from 8 to 19, hail from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and tru- truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today if it were not for the service of its more than 200, more than its 22,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, and energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout the proud history of the 4H program, the developed positive role models of countless Texans throughout its innovative and inspiring programs and continues to build character and instill values that have made our state strong and great. Now therefore be it resolved that Brazos County Commissioners Court hereby designate October the 2nd through the 8th, 2022, as National 4H Week of Texas, and commend the 4H Youth Development Program of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension and for its many men and women who have made the program a success.
So, howdy. My name is Taylor Colvin. I am the Brazos County 4H Council Chairman, and I have been in 4H for the past 10 years. I'm a member of St. Joseph's 4H Club, and I exhibit market barrows, breeding gilts. I compete in livestock judging, and I am also a member of the State 4H Council.
Hi, my name is Zachary Smith. I am the Brazos County First Vice Chairman. I am a part of the Southwood and Archery 4H Clubs, and my projects include sheep, poultry, food nutrition, art, archery, and photography. And I also compete in Ag ID.
Could you all also tell us what school you go to?
I go to College Station High School.
Thank you.
Howdy, everyone. My name is Riley Stokes. I'm the Brazos County Council's Second Vice Chairman. I'm currently a sophomore at Rutter High School and a member of the Wixson Valley 4H Club. My projects include beef cattle, market rabbits, livestock judging, and educational presentation and food nutrition. And I'm also serve on the District 9 4H Council.
Howdy. My name is Kyler Went, and I am a junior at College Station High School. I've been in 4H for, this is my ninth year now. Um, and I participate in showing, um, heifers, goats, market lambs, and, um, breeding ewes, rabbits, um, food nutrition projects, uh, livestock judging, livestock skill-a-thon, and many more.
So true.
My name is Becca Catlin. Um, I am a senior at Rutter High School. Um, this is my 10th year in 4H, and I'm a part of the St. Joseph's 4H Club as well. My projects include, um, market rabbits, food nutrition, public speaking, educational presentations, um, and then leadership projects, and, um, yeah.
My name is Ava Allensworth. I'm your count, your 4H County Council Treasurer. I'm a junior at Rutter High School, and I've been involved in 4H for the past nine years. And my main projects include market lambs and goats and livestock judging.
Uh, my name's Amanda Dean. I'm 16 and a junior at A&amp;M Consolidated High School. I'm currently serving as the District Delegate for the 4H County Council. Uh, my projects include market goats, Ag ID, and veterinary science.
Hi, my name is McKenna Johnson. I'm a freshman at Brazos Christian School, and I'm serving as your council reporter. My projects include market steers, market swine, as well as livestock judging and public speaking.
Hi, I'm Lily Bolin. I'm a freshman at A&amp;M Consolidated High School, and I'm serving as your parliamentarian. I show horses and compete in horse judging.
Hi, my name is Sam McGarry. I am a freshman at College Station High School. I am your health and sa- I'm the Health and Safety Officer. I do, I'm on the robotics club, uh, rabbit showing, and, uh, welding projects.
Hi, I'm Ethan Long. I'm the, currently the historian on the Brazos County Council. I attend Bryan High School as a sophomore currently, and some of my projects in 4H include food and nutrition and shooting sports.
Probably before we get through, we need to get everybody back up here and take pictures.
Matt Pfeifer, Brazos County 4H Agent. We appreciate Brazos County's support of our program.
Y'all come on up.
Come on up.
All right, good morning. Hendrick Bruce Hardoff, Brazos County 4H Carp Extension Program, Prairie Way, N.
Very good.
Hi, my name is Taylor Baldwin, and I am the new Assistant 4H Agent for Brazos County.
Okay, this is four. Shot it. Squeeze in.
Do go on the, go on the angle.
Yeah, on the, yeah.
Go angle.
Take an angle.
Take an angle.
Angle.
Yeah, put your left shoulder up.
We're trying to get everybody in the picture. Help us out. There you go. Very good.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. You're awesome. We're so proud of you. And thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, I'm so proud of you.
Let's go do the second tax.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Breakfast was great this morning. And thank you all.
4H does a great job, uh, helping, uh, youth grow into young leaders. Uh, we appreciate everything that, that, uh, 4H does. So, um, now we'll move to the discussion and approval of tax rate point 4735, our approval up to for 4735 for 2022. And, uh, we need four here to actually have anything really go on with that act, that item. So, I think we'll skip that item right now, just in case we were to happen to get a fourth one, uh, walk in late. And, uh, you know, we can't take any action on it right now anyway, so, uh.
Do you want us to pull it or just, uh, leave it?
Just leave it?
Yeah.
And we'll go back to it?
If they shall.
If we get a fourth one here, we'll come back to it.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so then number five is discussing possible action restoring the Memorial Student Center, M S C, as an early polling place for 2022. And this was, this was an item that Twister Aldridge asked to be placed on the agenda. I mean, we've had this discussion, and I believe the discussion, my take from that discussion that was, uh, I know there were some, uh, differences of opinion about whether it's legal or not legal, but at this point in, in the election process, to add another, um, polling location, uh, would be, uh, in my opinion, pretty much impossible. And I think that's what staff has told us. Uh, I, uh, don't, uh, I don't think it would be really prudent to even go into those discussions because we've already had them, and, and I think that was the, that's where the direction that we all had talked about doing. So, I would entertain a motion to remove it from the agenda since Twister Aldridge isn't here to, to give us his reasons why he felt like this was a, you know, a good step, unless somebody else wants to weigh in on it.
I know that we have the election, uh, coordinators for both cities here, and I'd like to hear from them, uh, as to, uh, whether or not it's possible to make this move. Ms. Smith?
Well, and I know, Commissioner Berry, that you said last, I think it was last week.
Yeah.
I wouldn't lose time that, that you're okay with us moving it back to 2023, but.
Absolutely. But if we can do, if we can do it this year, then I'm in favor of that. But I'd like to find out if it was logistically possible.
Can you speak to that, please?
Because it's not just the county that's holding the elections, it's both cities and both school boards.
Tanya Smith, uh, City of College Station City Secretary. Um, I spoke, spoke with my mayor.
Could you speak in the, like?
I spoke with my mayor and, uh, city manager. I have not spoken with our council. Uh, the entities involved in this election, uh, November election, um, had to move forward with the Commissioners Court's decision to change to the polling location to, from the M S C. Uh, we've called our elections. We've prepared our notice. Most of us have posted our notices of election, and we have already prepared and proved our notices for the papers. We've also had, um, we've also have prepared the notices, um, even for our website. This takes time and money. This late in the game, adding an additional location, not only will it be a rush, but we'll also have to go back to our councils and/or our boards to amend our orders calling the elections. Some of us have more than just general elections. There are bond elections with special deadlines. We also, uh, will be losing money on the preparation we had to make with translating our Spanish versions and with newspapers who have been preparing our proofs. Then you have to, you must have retest the equipment, the election equipment, all before October 24th, when early voting starts. Rushing causes mistakes. Mistakes in elections is detrimental. Then there is the cost of adding another polling location that most of us did not budget for. If Commissioners Court wants to bring back the M S C as a polling location, we understand. But let's wait until the next election year. There's not enough time in 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Strata?
Well, I think, uh, Tanya summed it up very well. Personally, I did not like the change eliminating the M S C because I believe that not only, uh, do a lot of students use that location, but there are people that live in Bryan, uh, and work on the campus that it would be very convenient for them to vote there. However, the Commissioners Court made that decision, and we moved ahead in good faith with that decision. Um, in terms of the election, uh, we have three elections going on. Our general election, a special election to fill a vacancy, and a special charter amendment election. Those have all been ordered by the deadline to order an election of August 22nd. Uh, we have already published our, uh, posted our notices, uh, on our website, on the BrazosVotes.org website. Our notices in both English and Spanish are at the newspapers. I've already been filled by one newspaper. We've already approved the proofs at the newspaper. Um, you know, when you have an emergency where, uh, polling place floods or burns or something, that's one thing, but, um, um, it's kind of late in the game now to switch horses in the middle of the stream. Uh, but again, I, I would certainly support mov- putting the M S C back next year because I believe it serves a very important purpose, and we would, we would, I would like to see it back. So it's just this year, it's just a little bit late now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
As I said, I'm in favor of, of moving it back, um, as soon as possible. It's just not feasible this year, but, uh, next year and going forward, it'll be at the M S C.
And, um. Excuse us. Um, I'd like to say that I too am in favor of moving the M S C, um, center back. And I have taken into consideration all the information provided. Uh, it is not feasible at this time. But, uh, I would vote in favor, especially since we know now we can have two polling places rather than just one, uh, at the M S C. We are, we have the option of opening a second. So, do I, do I, I will offer a motion, we take no action at this time. It's not feasible.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made in second to, uh, take no action. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Uh, number six. You're going to have to walk out. If you, we're not going to have. This is going to, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you politely to either keep it quiet or go outside. Or you're, you'll be asked to be, to, to leave. So we're going to, but I'm sorry. You asked to leave. I'll ask you to be removed. You need to move out. You need to move out. Okay. Uh, number six is Resolution 22-021, levying a tax rate Brazos County, Texas. We can't take any action on that because, uh, we don't have four here. But we can delay that again, uh, just in case we were to happen to get a fourth member here. Uh, so we won't take action on that right now. There's no action we can take because we don't have four. Uh, number seven is ratification of the property tax increase due to the adoption of the budgets that require more revenue for property taxes than the previous year. We don't, we won't be able to tack, take action on that one, uh, either because we don't have four here. So we'll move to number eight. Uh, considering to prove the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funding for one or more of the following projects. And this was, this was a list that, I mean, we need to be able to move forward. Uh, we've had a lot of discussion and, and, uh, how that, there's a lot of possibilities of how those funds were, uh, could be funded. This was, this was a recommendation that I came up with. Uh, and I put it on here to take possible action. I'm not sure that maybe we, I know we've got a workshop tomorrow. My thought on the workshop was that we would see, what's the next step? How do we move forward so we can begin to, uh, uh, do the things with, with the money that, that, uh, that are, I, I believe are the needs for Brazos County. But, but maybe we delay actually taking action on this. Uh, we can certainly discuss, uh, you know, what we've got on here and, uh, m- maybe if, if someone has any suggestions about where money might want to be shifted one way or the other, on or off, if we, if we decide to put something on the list from, from the ones that I, from number nine, then we'll have to decide where it'll come from, from the top list. So I'm, I'm open for input from, uh, Commissioners here.
So your suggestion is that we revisit this at, uh, our workshop tomorrow where we possibly might have other Commissioners present?
That's correct.
I'll offer that motion, uh, Commissioner and Judge, uh, because we want to make the best decisions with regards to the spending of this fund. So we might, uh, table it until next week?
Yeah, we can have the discussion tomorrow, but then ta- table the action until, I, I think we're all off. We, we're in a conference next week, so it'll be actually two weeks before we can actually take some action.
You're correct.
Yeah.
So I will offer a motion that we table the action and, uh, file a discussion and vote in two weeks.
On October 11th.
October 11th is the date?
Yeah, I believe so.
October 11th? Okay.
Okay, so a motion and a second.
Yep.
Have been made to table number eight, uh, until October the 11th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries, and we'll need the same thing with number nine.
Yeah. Yep.
So I hear a motion and a second to table it.
I move that we table number nine.
Second.
Motion made in second to table number nine. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 10, order number 20-030, directing payroll fund to the general fund for 2023.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is order 22-031, adopting a tax rate of 5.31% for the local provider participation fund for fiscal year 2023, approving payment for the administration cost to Brazos County designating PNC Bank as the LPPF depository.
Move approval.
Second that.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number, we've already done 12, so number 13 is approval of the proposed county holidays for 2023 calendar year.
Move approval.
I second that.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 14 is approval of the reapportments of the following Brazos County Child Welfare Board. Term of appointment is September 30, 2022, September 2, September 30, 2025.
As a member and the liaison of this board, I wholeheartedly offer a motion to approve the recommended reapportments.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the appointments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 15 is approval of the following job descriptions.
I move approval 1 through 57, but I think you ought to read them all.
I was hoping someone would give me the 1 through 57.
Yeah, we'll, we'll approve that and I second the motion.
Motion made in second to approve 1 through 57. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 16 is acceptance of donated unclaimed property left by inmates leaving Brazos County Detention Center for the March of, for the months of March, April, May, June, and July 2022.
I move a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 17 is approval requested from the District Attorney's Office for acceptance of an amendment to the Texas Council of Family Violence Vendor Agreement.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 18 is approval of the following community support contracts for FY 2023.
Move approval A through J.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 19 is approval acceptance of possible future funds through the regional mitigation program, BVCOG mod funding.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 20 is request authorization for wire transfer 5,000, $5,502,892.39 to HHSC for the uncompensated care program demonstration year 11. Final payment for the benefit of participating hospitals using funding from the Brazos County Local Provider Participation Fund.
I move approval.
Second.
And for those that are not familiar with this act, this is how Brazos County pays the indigent defense, I mean, the indigent health in Brazos County. So 5,502,892.39 goes to that particular cause.
And the good thing is that it's not actually Brazos County's money.
Exactly.
The hospitals have, they asked for this program and, and we actually set that rate earlier and they fund the money and then it, it's a multiplier. The money that they put up, we send up and it actually multiplies. So it's, it's really good for indigent healthcare in Brazos County. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 21 is award of RFP CIP 23-008, collection in delinquent criminal and civil court. Cost of fines, fees, and recommended awards, McCray, Vassel, Bragg, Allen, PC, Attorneys at Law.
Move approval.
Second that.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 22 is award RFP 23-015, sex offender treatment provider. Recommended award is Augustine Gutierrez.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 23 is permission to advertise bid number 23-025, seal code.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 23 is permission to advertise for.
We just did that.
I just did that one. 24 is approval of contract 23-060 with power, DMS Inc., for talent management software.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 25 is approval of final class 7-11 Ranch, Phase 1, Block 1, Lot 5R-1R, 5.340 acres, THMA Survey AE-160, Brazos County, Texas, site located precinct 1.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 26, approval of expenditure journal entry for Brazos County FY 21-22, June, August, June through August 2022. Cash contribution $50,104.64 to CSCD Specialty Court Program.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 27 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval A and B.
Second.
Motion made in second to A and B, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 28 is budget amendments. Budget amendments, let's see, let me get the budget amendments paid by Brazos County, claim number 8117.
No, no, we're doing, we're doing the budget amendment.
Budget amendments, FY 21/22 budget amendments, 49.01 through 49.06.
Move approval. Second.
But motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 29 is personnel change of status.
Move approval A and B.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 20, 30 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8117790 through claim number 8117978 and claim number 9005850 through claim number 9005911.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 31 is acknowledgement of FY 21/22 budget actuals by fund as of September 21st, 2022. 32 is acknowledgement of the monthly reports submitted in September of 2022. Number 33 is juvenile director's report on inmate population. Melissa.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Can you speak into the mic?
Yes, ma'am. Today we have 47 youth in detention. We have 37 males and 10 females and we have 20 youth on monitor.
Thank you.
Thank you. 34 sheriff's report on inmate population. Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This morning, we've got 665 in custody.
Going up.
564 men, 101 women. We have 59 on electronic monitoring with eight pending.
Thank you.
Okay.
Eight, yes.
Thank you. Population's creeping up.
35 is announcement of interest items of possible future agenda topics and if I, mind one on the list is.
I have one. For county employees only, there's an active shooting training this afternoon at the Expo Center at 1 o'clock. So that's county employees only active shooter training. Recommend you all go if you can.
And our next Tuesday's agenda's been canceled because most of us, if not all, are in a conference.
That's correct.
And I have an announcement. Starting October 1, we'll have a new process when requesting for budget amendments and adjustments. Instead of the regular paper form that was used in the past, Desmond with Records Management has helped us create a form through Laserfish forms. So it's gonna be a process where you have a requester and the Requestor goes automatically to the department head elected official for approval and then so on to Budget Office, Auditor's Office. And then if, once it's posted, we'll let them know that it's been posted. It's also safekeeping, it automatically will be stored into Laserfish. So the department will have the documentation as well as us. Hopefully, we'll streamline everything moving forward. So at the end of this week, we'll also have instructions and links of where to go as well as contacts if you need any help completing it, so.
All right, thanks Nina. Desmond does a great job.
He does.
Any other announcement? 36 is call for citizens' input and our concerns.
We have one coming from the back.
You want to speak, Mike?
Mike Southern, Bryan. I wanted to speak on six and five, but I guess I still can't since I'm making observations about what's going on. First of all, the tax rate from yesterday, there was a great discussion yesterday. There was some really good points brought up to, to solidify, I think, a decision that there's plenty of money available to reduce the taxes for people because in the last 10 years, just the county alone has doubled from like 50 million to 110 million in taxes collected. And I think the people that are against the tax rate reduction don't understand what's going on. They, they fear that if they reduce the taxes, that some project that they want to have happen in their neighborhoods won't happen. But those monies are separate from what we're talking about in the tax rate. So there's really no fear. And then on the, I hate to see the students leave, but they're gone, I guess. Any case, on that polling place, I'd like to see the law that says you can't change the polling place. If there is, well, nobody's mentioned what the law is. And the other thing is that, like the city of Bryan was saying, if there's some flood or fire, you have to change the location. So there is a process by which you can change that location. And I think because of the importance of Texas A&amp;M and the students, I think that needs to be considered.